Good, how are you doing? You're over here by me.
Deborah, we ready? Wait a minute. All right, let's officially call our meeting to order at 5:00 PM. We will start with roll call.
Chair Dr. Keith Rogers.
Present.
Vice Chair Kate Turner-Whiteley.
Present.
Secretary Elizabeth Foote.
Present.
Treasurer Karen Dukowski.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Nathaniel Wong.
Here.
Trustee Asha Jones.
Present.
Trustee Elaine Sanchez.
Here.
Trustee Harry Williams, Jr.
Present.
Trustee Brittany Fielder.
Fielder, I'm sorry.
It's okay, present.
Executive Director Kelvin Watson.
Present.
And Attorney Gerald Welk.
Have a call.
Yes, we have a call.
Thank you. Let's have everyone who is able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. So we will move on to agenda item number three, Board Action to Accept Proposed Addenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Did we catch who made the motion and who seconded it?
Member Williams seconded.
We're good. Okay. All right, any, any comments, questions before we call for the question? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Aye.
All right, none opposed. Motion carries. We will move on to agenda item number four, Approval of Proposed Minutes from our regular board meeting of trustees on October 9, 2025. Do we have a motion to accept?
This is trustee Fielder, I submit an motion to accept the proposed minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion carries. We have approved our minutes. We will move on to the, to the chair's report. I did just want to follow up. I want to maybe go out of order within the chairs, but I want to give, I think we have a president of our foundation, Felipe is here, so we want to turn the mic over to him, have him give us an update on the foundation, and then I'll carry on with the rest of my chair's update.
Good afternoon, Chair Rogers. Thank you very much. Just take a couple minutes. Thank you very much. My name is Felipe Ortiz, Chair of the Foundation. Just real quickly, we just finished our audit, had a very good, clean audit. It's on diligent and public records. I'm sure you'll go through it. We've been also searching for a new executive director to help marshal through a lot of things, including raising money. We've also sent the contract over to the Director Kelvin Watson and the board and Dr. Rogers, so you guys can take a look at it and see if you agree with it, or if there's something else we need to change. But we're almost there. We're hoping to have an executive director selected and onboard this first or second week in January. That individual worked very closely with Dr., with Kelvin Watson, sorry, not yet doctor, Kelvin Watson, so that they can really marshal, look at how to assemble more money to help all the programs in the building that's going on. Weekly, I spent probably four to six hours a week on foundation business, approving checks, contracts, grants, things like that. It's busy work. So I do apologize for not being here, but rest assured, the board has been meeting regularly, sometimes once a month and every three months consistently. Thank you again, and pretty much that's it. I don't want to take too much of your time, and I'll entertain any questions to you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, President Felipe of the Foundation. So I'll turn it over to any of my fellow board members to see if you have any questions, though there were a few questions at our last meeting concerning updates on the foundation and the agreement. So now that both we're here and Felipe is here as well, we can ensure to try to answer any questions as best we can without getting into too many of the details because we just received the agreement, so we still have to go through the recommended changes that have been presented in the revised agreement. And then we will circle back to this board in terms of where, where we are after we review that. So I'll turn it over to any of our board members for questions related to the foundation's update.
I believe before we respond, we will, of course, need to be evaluated by our attorneys of record.
Yes, and our sort of official review committee that have been meeting with the foundation concerning the agreement is comprised of Executive Director Watson, myself, and Councilman Welk and one of his colleagues.
Hi, trustee. This is a question from Elaine Sanchez.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Sanchez.
Thank you. I just, so if you have just received the agreement to review, how long will it take for you and your committee with Gerald Welk to circle back with the board, our board?
Well, we are synchronizing the calendars of those four who I just mentioned. We hope to meet within the next week or so to review the recommendations or changes since we last met with the foundation, which was, I want to say maybe was it May or June? So we'll have to refresh our recall of all the, the original agreement and then look at their revisions after we synchronize our calendars, and then we certainly want to move quickly to try to get to an agreement as we've always indicated since we, our last agreement expired. So hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
For clarity, that came to you today.
I'll defer to Executive Director Watson in terms of when he officially received it.
So I won't say I officially received it. What I'll say is as part of the foundation's board meeting, their meeting, that the, the agreement was a part of their agreement, was a part of their meeting. So I received it just via the distribution of that document. When I received it via that, via that mechanism, I forwarded it to Lori Thompson. So this was last week. So this was middle, sometime last week, that I forwarded it to Lori Thompson, Chair Rogers, and General Counsel Welk. So we received it then, Lori Thompson then went through the version that the foundation had made their, I'll call them their recommendations or their counter to our initial proposal back in May. And she's redlined it, and now, as Chair Rogers said, we're synchronizing calendars to actually talk about what the two versions are. And then the plan is to come back to the foundation and say, here's where, here's where the discrepancies still lie, or there's still some, you know, not in agreement, we're not in agreement. And then, so I, as I mentioned earlier during the foundation board meeting, there's still going to be some continual negotiations taking place between the foundation and our committee before we get it all tied up, before it should come to this board.
Perfect. Thank you for working so expeditiously on that.
Yes.
Dr. Rogers, if I may weigh in, for the rest of the board, please rest assured that your attorneys have done a great job. I think there's three items in there. But procedurally, the board, they finally secured all the votes to have a unanimous vote to approve the contract. Now, they also gave the authority to myself and Fred and to really fine tune the details so it does not have to go back to the board for another lengthy 90-day review and everything else, look under the hood. So really, once your, your attorney's in, this board and your director gives it to you, then it comes back to us. It'll be agreements, minor tweaking, and I think it's all doable, but it'll go very quickly. But trying to get everybody together, trying to get everybody unanimous, unanimous vote is really the challenge so that they feel part of it vested. They have skin in the game, if I can use that term, somebody used it before. It's really important, but we're here. I think we're here. So rest assured that everybody's been doing their due diligence and working hard on both boards' behalf. Thank you. Dr. Rogers.
Just a quick question. I think trustee Dukowski had a question, and they will acknowledge trustee Williams next.
I just have a comment, and I'm so looking forward, I'm glad, I'm really glad that we are, that you're gaining traction here, and something's going to happen. And I, for one, would appreciate any time at every meeting that we have, if you can give us an update of what's going on, because that's real important, and we'd appreciate that.
Dr. Rogers, thank you. I will be here at every meeting going forward. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rogers. Just a real question. If we should come to an impasse, whether it's our General Counsel or Executive Director, what is our process, or we're just going to keep having to do it? Let's keep going through until we can get there. I'm just, I'm just, you know, because we do get to certain points that we may come to an impasse. I just want to know what is our option, or what is the plan?
I'll defer to Councilman Welk.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, nothing looks that alarming in the agreement. There are things we have to verify that are legal and how we, and what our fiduciary responsibility is to taxpayers and to structure it. There's no disagreement, I don't think, in concept from the foundation, but should we come to a point where we can't agree, then it's going to be a matter of what these two boards decide. So we only tell you, we think this will work, the structure's good, it's enforceable, and it's an appropriate kind of an agreement. And it's up to the 25 people who make up the two boards to determine whether you're going to go forward or stop.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just want to know, I mean, sometimes we get to those points when we deal with these type of contracts that could get to a point where there's an impasse. And then, you know, as small as we sometimes believe they might be, there's just, we get that brick wall.
We're trying to avoid that, both Felipe's attitude and, and your representatives. The direction is try to make an agreement, so that's, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the response on our behalf, trust, I mean, Councilman Welk. And I believe trustee Fielder had a question, and more question. Did anyone else have any questions? Anyone online? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rogers, real quick, 30 seconds. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Big day on December the 9th. It's a testament to your hard work. It's been six and a half years trying to get there. I'm so excited, you can't believe it, but it's, it's your time to shine. So congratulations again on the West Las Vegas Library Open. Thank you again, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you for joining us. And then just to conclude with my update, I just want to give, the foundation agreement was one of the updates I had, so we're just taking care of that. Also, we talked about our executive director's contract and coming back with the timeline. Things are not moving as fast as we had hoped when I checked in with, with Jeff concerning all the responses, but we do have enough responses now in terms of Gallagher's market study, so we're just compiling all the data, or at least they are compiling all the data. They will be circling back to Jeff within, within, within a few days, and then I will work with Jeff to come up with a timeline, and within that timeline, we will have a working committee representative of some of our group members here to talk through the process timeline, and then we will come back to the board to officially lay out what the timeline is, and then we will move forward with executing that timeline. And the goal is certainly to not wait until the last minute to get the contract agreed upon between us and Executive Director Watson. So we certainly want to move quickly but thoroughly in that process. And next on my agenda was just to also remind everyone that we also talked about the library meeting rotation, about maybe tweaking that a little bit based on, I believe we had a couple presentations from Matt and team, and, you know, just, there is a document in there that Matt provided for us to review. It's on page, page 24 of all the documents, but in short, the document just reads that, you know, there's not necessarily a formal process for the board to vote on a rotation schedule for meeting locations. It's typically at the chair's discretion to approve the meeting rotation. And so I will be taking the recommendation into account, and we will move forward with a modified semi-rotation that will save us some man-hours with setting up all the locations, and we will stick to the schedule of January 15 in Summerlin. We will move to Windmill for February, then West Las Vegas, the new library in March. And then April will be East Las Vegas, May 21st will be Windmill, and June will be Windmill, and then July 9th, Clark County. And then we won't meet in August, and September will be West Las Vegas, followed by And then we won't meet in August, and September will be West Las Vegas, followed by October at Windmill. And then November at Sahara West, concluding the calendar year, December 10th at Windmill. So that will be the revised rotation that we will pilot to see if it works. And, you know, whoever becomes chair next can revisit the rotation and modify it if it's not having the intended positive benefit that we hope this one will have. And that concludes my chair's update. I'll see if there were any questions of me concerning the additional two items that I discussed.
This is trustee Elaine Sanchez. I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead trustee Sanchez.
So regarding the working group for the information with HR, their analysis and their reports, what is the working group's job?
Regarding the executive director's contract?
Yes, because my, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, what I'm, what I'm wondering is, and maybe this is really a question for Gerald. Gerald, if Attorney Welch, if there is a report being done by the HR company, and I'm assuming that they're going to do, you know, they're going to share the study, what is the working group doing before the actual conversation with our board members as a whole?
And trustee Sanchez, I'm gonna have Jeff come to the podium to explain what the role of the market study is, to give us information from which to move our process forward.
For the record, Jeffrey Serpico, Director of Human Resources. Typically, a compensation group is part of the board would look at the study provided by Gallagher and then discuss how they want to negotiate with the executive director in terms of base pay. If there's any additional benefits we're not offering. It wouldn't be to analyze the data that's being done by a third party. They'll present that data probably in terms of descriptive statistics, medians, 75th percentiles. Let us know the typical market position of similar libraries. And then the goal typically of a compensation committee of the board may be to put together a few recommendations regarding the contract for the board to see and vote on. That would, none of that's been discussed. That's, that's what the typical role of that committee would be.
Trustee Sanchez, did I answer your question?
Yes, is Gerald Welch there?
Yes, Councilman Welch is here.
Okay, so I just want to know, from a board perspective, I just want to know if we as board members as a whole, even though there will be recommendations, will be able to publicly speak about, you know, what our thoughts are?
Yes. Yeah, the, the committee is not finalizing the agreement. The board has to. They're just making recommendations to the board. If you don't like any of the recommendations, you can do something else. But like any committee, their purpose is just to whittle down the information coming in, put it together and give it to you, then make a decision.
And the purpose of the report by the third party is to make sure the data they're using allows them to make a fair and reasonable recommendation.
Yeah, and, and that part I completely, that makes perfect sense to me. I just wanted to understand specifically what is the role of the working committee? Thank you.
Right. Any other questions concerning the chair's report? Okay, we will move to the next agenda item, which is the library report. So I'll turn it over to Executive Director Watson.
Thank you, Chair Rogers. So I've submitted my executive director's report as my executive director's monthly report. But before I go into my report, one of the items that is listed in my activities was to, that we conducted finalist interviews for the vacant executive assistant position. And we selected Mr. Chandler Cooks. So I'd like to introduce Chandler Stan, introduce Chandler to, you know, in person. You know, I know that he's introduced himself to the board via email, and we also sent out an introductory email to the entire library district regarding Chandler and welcoming him to his role. He's already hit the ground running, and he'll be who you'll see here at the meetings, running the meetings and already participating. So thank you, Chandler.
From the board, welcome to the library family. Then I'll.
Go ahead, go ahead, Chair. Nope.
No, I was, I didn't want to interrupt, let you finish your, your update before I see if there were any questions.
All right. So some of the other things that I also wanted to share via, via my report, things that are listed, written on there. One of the things that we, that I attended along with Dr. Rosalind Dean was the, was the library district. We participated in the 2025 Urban Libraries Council Leadership Forum in Cincinnati, Ohio. And so as mentioned in the first item, the next ULC Leadership Forum is actually going to be hosted here in Las Vegas, Nevada. And we were chosen. This will be the first time that this has been in Vegas. And it's a, it's a coup, I believe, for us and any library system to host the ULC Forum. It's a national event that is, large library systems like ours, as well as mid-sized library systems participate or are members. And rotates. And so there's about 300 attendees. So we're bringing about 300 library leaders here to Las Vegas next fall, end of September, beginning of October. So something, so I think it's September 30th to October 2nd that that'll be taking place. Beyond that, Chair and Board of Trustees members, you can see all the other activities that have been going off with, with myself. Again, this is a not all-inclusive list, but mostly highlights some of the activities that I have, you know, personally participated in. So I'll entertain any questions at this time, Chair Rogers.
Okay, I'll open up the microphones if any of the fellow trustees have any questions or any reports they want to call up to comment or ask further questions.
I'm curious. I know there's been various discussions, and I don't know if we're going to. I'm talking about the Dolly Pardon Reading Foundation program. I, I know it's not a free program, which we all would hope that it would be. But is it something we're doing or not doing, or?
Thank you for that question, trustee Ford. At this time, the library district won't be participating. We tried to convene a meeting, we did convene a meeting with the, the foundation group and the other three library systems. And so the other three library systems opted out not to participate in the county. And so as a part of that decision, I've also decided that we wouldn't participate to cover the entire county, because when you look at the, the cost and the ROI, it would be a significant cost for the library district to cover all of the library systems in this, in this venture. So at this time.
That makes sense.
So at this time, we, so at this time, we, we've said, we've let them know that we're going to pass at this time. We'll circle back again when the other three library systems are hopefully able to participate financially. Even though we knew that our contribution would be larger than theirs, they've all opted not to participate.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes, I have a comment and a question. So I saw in the general services report that we are now stocking Narcan in all of the libraries with the, where the AED systems are. And I read that four staff members have administered Narcan, resulting in four people being saved from an overdose, which is amazing. So I want to start by commending the district for starting Narcan for overdoses and the staff who are doing that work, which I'm sure is a little traumatic and very stressful. And I'm just curious. You know, as we include different lifesaving things in our branches, has there been any talk or thinking about doing any Stop the Bleed training, or stocking bleed control kits, or anything like that in addition to?
So Leo Segura, Library Operations, for the record. Thank you for your question. So the, the Narcan is being distributed in partnership with General Services and Library Operations through the Discipline and Security Team. We also do CPR training. So the city of Las Vegas requires a number of our staff to be CPR trained. We extend that to all of our locations and not just limit it to the city of Las Vegas. So all of our district picks or persons in charge do receive the CPR training, and it's open to all staff who wish to participate in that as well. As part of that, our safety manager has been instrumental in the last few years about including the Stop the Bleed. And we do include Stop the Bleed kits inside of all of our AED machine things. So in addition to the AED, we have a Stop the Bleed kit with the tourniquet. And we also have two doses of Narcan in additions to the ones that we're passing out to the public.
Okay, then I'm very happy to hear that. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I want to see if we call John up to just give us a refresher and update on our upcoming big event, as Kelvin said, the early Christmas present.
John Vino, General Services Director. We are very excited. The library itself, we've received our temporary certificate of occupancy, so we are on schedule. We are working on our final certificate with the city. The actual grand opening being spearheaded by branding and marketing, but every department is, is, you know, is geared up for the grand opening. If you're interested in getting reserved parking for that day, we will have some reserved parking. So if you could reach out to Chandler, if that's appropriate, to let us know, and we'll work with you to make sure we will have plenty of security on site.
Oh, to Chandler, I'm sorry.
You know, and then we'll work on, you know, we, we've rented a tent, the, the actual ribbon cutting and the event will be under a tent. We rented a tent, so we'll be in our outside plaza. There's a lot of surprises and a lot of stuff scheduled for the day throughout the day into the night. The building itself, construction-wise, is in really good shape. We've got our FFNE is in. You know, we're, we're working through a lot of the, the little details and getting everything in, in its final place and doing final cleanings, working with core construction on finalizing the punch list. So the usual last-minute things. It's been, it's been on schedule. Could use an extra week or two, but we'll be good. Who doesn't? You know. Happy to answer any questions anybody has about the event or, or the project.
All I know is, I don't know about my fellow trustees, but I am so excited. I cannot wait to for the, for the ribbon cutting and grand opening. And, you know, I continue to say, if you haven't seen it, you know, if you don't want to wait, John has been very accommodating to allowing us and other community members just to do a private tour, which is just very impressive, so.
We've had a couple of patrons sneak in. We're putting some, you know, they think, you know, all the cars in the parking lot, there's a lot of activity on the space. We do have 24-hour security on, on, on our security on-site, you know, but there is a lot of, a lot of hands on deck. So every now and then you see somebody running around and you can tell.
I'm looking forward to seeing when the marquee lights.
The, yep, that, we've, we've had that up and tested. It's really amazing. We look forward. We're doing some punch list items on that, so it's not up and operating, but we hope to have it operating next week, our full, our LED screen in full operation by early next week. So, yeah.
I just want to commend you for keeping this project on time. In my world, that doesn't happen very often. It is a Herculean task to meet these deadlines, and that has shocked me every time you've said we're on task, on track, because that's just not something that I'm used to hearing. So I think it's really important that we acknowledge you and the whole team behind it, because I know it takes a village. And because we won't be meeting again before the opening, I just, for everyone who is working at the West Las Vegas Library right now, I know you're packing up, you are working hard, moving is a terrible chore. So to, I know what they're faced with right now, heading into Thanksgiving and heading into this, this opening, it's just a tremendous amount of work, and so I'm just super grateful.
I appreciate it. It's been, it's been a great team to work with on this project, you know.
I applaud you as well, because nothing else stopped in the other part of your life. For that, you took care of some wonderful things. One of the things that I think is delightful, specifically in this building, is the expanded bookstore area, which came on board during the time of all of this, you know, with our Happy Misside Libraries coming on board. And that's just one thing. And I believe you did something at Enterprise, the same, you know, there's all kinds of things that have happened.
Good Springs is, I couldn't report back, is, is moving along. We've got our 50% plan, so. You know, we received, we were able to change from residential to public, which was one of the bigger changes that we need to make. So I'm still hopeful we can work through the winter and hopefully maybe have a spring, little spring grand opening for that, that library out in, out in Good Springs as well.
Thank you.
Chair. Yes, trustee Williams?
I just really want to say heartfelt thank you. Being part of this project before, I mean, when our director first came on and sitting in Councilman Creer's office and talking about some of the things that he envisioned with the 100 plan and this is one of those major projects that is changing the footprint of the historic West Las Vegas community. This is going to be the hub of this community. There's several other things that are opening or soon to open. This is one of the first major, major, you know, milestones with the workforce center coming aboard with CSE and Sam Cherry's project for the Workforce Development Center that's, or Housing Center that's opening. If you guys have been over there, Marple Manor's halfway knocked down. But just to see all these things actually coming to fruition and not giving hope, not giving up hope on, you know, bringing something positive to the historic West Side. And so thank you to you, thank you to our director for having the vision to seeing the possibilities of improving this community. So I really want to say thank you. Since we won't be able to meet again before we actually had that grand opening, it means a lot for somebody who's been, you know, scratching in this community for the last 30 years. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
You know, and the tours were a lot of motivation for us to, we did do quite a bit of tours for the community and local pastors and local stakeholders, and their excitement about seeing where we were was, you know, a big motivation for us to make sure that, you know, the things we were doing and the things we put into the library to make it that, you know, really stand out 21st century library. It was great motivation for us as well, seeing how excited the community was. And this is, I think, a real true community library, you know. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited to have everybody walk around and see, you know, construction's done, but right now we're really working on all the the cherry pieces that I think are going to make this library stand out a little bit more than it, than your everyday library, so.
Just close on the, on the things. We're all saying the same things and you answered, but again, thank you. When we brought the community elders to the tour, that was a highlight for them, doing a little gift for them for the opening, but the connection to community was huge. So I grew up in Vegas, the West Las Vegas Library, even when it was at the mosque, where the mosque is now. That was our gathering spot. And to see what we're going to have now means a lot. And so everybody was all over social media promoting that they got a tour because they were so special. I was like, you don't know anybody that got a tour. But I let them have that moment. But just really appreciate you, because you were the one coming out there on Saturday morning and doing. So I know that is a lot when you already do so much. So it just really makes me proud to be a part of this board and what's happening.
Appreciate it.
And just thank you for your personal sacrifice and coming out and your team.
Appreciate it. It's been a whole district-wide joint effort, you know. Every department has kicked in, every department's over there now doing their thing. And it's great to see, you know, this part when the last 30 days and, you know, you're putting up whiteboards and furniture in place, and the books are all in place. You know, we have all the books on the shelves and, you know, you walk in one day and it's, oh, looks like a library.
Even the security guard was excited and happy. And when we did our tour, he was telling me stuff because he's there every day. So it, it means a lot. Thank you.
I appreciate it. We look forward to seeing everybody out there on December 9th.
Yes. And, and just one last thing, I just wanted to say, there, there, prior to this just being a pot of dirt, to have a vision to continue when there was a lot of naysayers that's saying, why? We have something already. It, it, it's, it works. And just having the vision to say, you know what, we can do better for our community is great. And you guys have definitely done better for this community with building this building.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And then I did want to have one more person come up. And then I did want to have one more person come up, a Rosalyn, if you could come up, I had a question regarding some of the grants. It's great to see so much positive grant activity, you know, underway. And I just wanted to see if you could give us maybe just a, you know, high level overview of sort of what the ask is for the federal appropriations and the community project funding.
Oh, well, Dr. Rosalyn Dean, Business Strategies and Planning Director for the record. So for, I'm sorry, the first one?
It was, it was the one, the federal appropriations and community project funding, the 12.4 million from the offices of Senators Rosen and Cortez Masto.
Yeah, so we were, actually, I think I'm a little bit uncertain on that one in front of.
Without looking at it, I believe that's the, the re-ask for the Rainbow Project.
Oh, yeah, for the amphitheater. So, yeah, so we did ask for funds to do the amphitheater over at Rainbow to get that theater reopened. So that's what we are hoping that, that those funds will, will get us going over.
And I'll just add some additional because Rosalyn, so we've, we've asked, this has been a, an ask for the last few years. Mrs. Lee's office, and so the goal, and we don't control what's happening at the federal level. So we hope that with everything that's going on, that they get around to the appropriation process. And so if they get around to it, then we'll, we've got luck, we've got a chance, right? Trustee Jones probably knows more about this process than I do, but I'll give you the, the high level of if, if not, we'll be coming back to this ask again next year when the, when our senators or congressional delegation ask us what projects do they want us to focus on. This will be a continual, this looks like it'll be a continual ask until we actually get through the appropriation process.
Yes, that's what you gotta do. Every time that cycle, that window opens, you gotta have it, have it prepared.
But we didn't have any, it's, we leave it on our grants list because we do keep them as active as, until we hear something, whether it's an approval or denial. So there are several, and I do apologize because there are some grants that have been on that list predating my time in this position. And so until we hear something, we just leave them until we know.
Okay, thank you for the update. And I don't know if anyone else had any questions for Dr. Dean while she's at the microphone. Otherwise, I will, you know, end my question for her and then just see if there are any other trustees who had questions concerning any other, other library report before we close out this agenda item.
I'd just like to say that Ms. Dean, your work is incredible. You've come on board Gangbusters. And every time we have a report, it's always impressive to see what all has been accomplished. And thank you.
Thank you. And we, we do actively try to make sure we're going after as many grants and having projects ready to request the funds so we can keep the library well funded. And especially for the special projects that we want to be able to do. So thank you.
Any other questions, trustees? All right, here now, we will close out Agenda Item Number Six, Library Reports, and we will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Unfinished Business. I'm not seeing that we have anything under that item, so we will move to Agenda Item Eight, New Business. I know we have consent agenda items. I wanted to pull one item out, Agenda Item Number One, for consideration of possible board action to accept the fiscal year 2024, 2025 audit. Report, move that agenda out and move it under regular agenda item. But if we could do consent agenda first, Floresto, if you don't mind.
Yes, the audit is on the consent agenda item.
Yes, I'm gonna see if we can move it out from consent agenda. Or do we need it, do we leave it in if we still want to have a, a quick presentation? We can leave it there? Okay, well, we will leave it under consent agenda, but I would ask Floresto to just give the full board a, a brief overview of what was shared in the Finance Audit Committee meeting concerning the recent audit.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. For the record, I'm Floresto Cabias, Chief Financial Officer. And on November 6th, the Finance and Audit Committee met to review the results of the audit of the district for fiscal year 2025. And at that committee meeting, the committee voted to recommend that the board of trustees accept the results of that audit as performed by the external auditors, Hinton Berdick, CPAs and advisors. Here tonight is Crimson Singleton. She is a director with Hinton Berdick. And she's here to provide a summary of the information presented to the Finance and Audit Committee. Before I turn it over to Ms. Singleton, I wanted to add some color to the financials being discussed tonight. What the numbers show is that the district is in a strong financial position as of June 30th. And the district is continuing to build on that healthy financial foundation through its budgeting and spending practices. At the September meeting, I provided a financial update to the trustees, so I won't provide those details again. But I wanted to emphasize that the district's incoming revenues are continuing to remain stable. In fact, the Executive Director and I attended the Center for Business and Economic Research's Economic Outlook. And the economists there acknowledged a slowdown in economic activity in Las Vegas over the summer. But they also believe that economic activity will improve going forward. And staff agrees with that evaluation, especially since the numbers we are seeing so far this fiscal year are supporting that thesis. And the financials were, as presented by the auditors, Ms. Singleton will be discussing the clean opinion that the district received. And that's a testament to the hard work all year long by the financial services team. And I especially wanted to acknowledge Martha Ford and Amy Lynn, two of the library district CPAs who worked hard and closely with the auditors to make sure that the audit was completed on time. Crimson, thanks again to you and your audit team for always making this such a smooth process. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thanks. It's good to be with you today. I'll do a screen share here. I don't know if y'all can see it, but I have a little slide presentation here, so I think it was distributed in your packets as well, so. So, yeah, my name is Crimson Singleton. I'm with Hinton Berdick, Director, and was involved in the audit this year. And so I'll just go over a few highlights here for you. We also want to thank the district for, on their end, as we go through this process. Everyone's really great to work with, gets, gets us what we need and it makes it a smooth process. So thanks to all their efforts. We know it takes a lot of time out of their normal day-to-day activities to get ready for the audits. So they do a great job and we appreciate all their work. I also wanted to mention, in the financial statements you, you received, sometimes it might be a little overwhelming. It's kind of a big packet of information there, a lot of pages. If nothing else, if you look at page five, the management's discussion and analysis, that's just a high level overview of some of the activity and summary financial information that's, would maybe helpful or helpful to use. So I just wanted to go over the objectives of our audit. The objectives are to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement. And misstatements are considered material if there is a substantial likelihood that individually or in the aggregate, they would influence the judgment made by a reasonable user based on the financial statements. So those are the objectives. We conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Now, in the financial statements, there's two reports that we issue as there's, that give the results of our audit. The first report is on page one and as Floresto mentioned, this is the audit on the financial statements and there was an unmodified or clean opinion. So that's what you want. That's the best, best results you can receive. So great job on that. And then also there's a report that's required to be issued on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. If there are any non-compliance issues or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the controls of the district that come to our attention, we report those in there. And there was no, no findings there, so everything's good, good there, so. And those are on page, that report's on page 73 of the financial statements. So now I'll just go over some high level trend analysis. This is the government wide, so everything at the, at the government level. There's, this is the net position, so that's kind of the governmental term for equity. So all of your assets less your liabilities gets you to the net position. There's some different categories of equity or this net position. The first one is the net invested in capital assets, which represents all of the ass, capital assets, the buildings, the library books, any equipment, those types of things, less any debt used, debt outstanding that was used to acquire those assets. So at the end of the fiscal year 2025, there was 192 million in net invested in capital assets. And there was that increase you're, you're seeing there from the, there's two factors. One is the West Las Vegas Library that's being constructed, so that added to it. In addition, as the East Las Vegas and Mesquite Qualic Bees were closed down, they had some debt that was forgiven. And so that increased the net, net, net investment in capital assets there. And then the, that pink line is restricted net position. It had 27 million at the end of the year. Most of that's related to the Qualic Bee West Las Vegas. Those, that activities there. And then the unrestricted was 20, 39 million at the end of, end of the fiscal year. Now represents a 13.8 million increase. So seeing positive trends, overall, the net position is increasing and so in a good position there. And then this is the cash balances of the library district. Here you can also see positive trends. At the end of the fiscal year, there was 90 million in unrestricted in unrestricted cash and 4 million in restricted cash. So good, good position there. And then this is, now I want to dive into some of the individual funds. The general fund had revenues and expenditures steadily increasing over the last few years. At, at the end of fiscal year 25, the revenues for that year were 105 million. The expenditures were 85 million. And then in addition, they also transferred out 16.5 million to the Capital Projects Fund. So the, the general fund overall, over time, you'd expect it to be kind of steady increase as revenues increases, if you'd want the expenses to, to increase only as the, the revenues increase. So both positive trends there. And then this is the fund balance or the equity of the general fund. So you can see it's been increasing over the last three years up to 33 million. And that's all unassigned, meaning there's no ties to it, the, it can be used at the district's discretion. Industry, industry standards recommend having at least two months' worth of expenditures in fund balance. And the district's general fund, that 33 million represents about 4.6 months' worth of expenditures based on FY '25 spending levels. So you're in a good, healthy position there and positive trends. This is the foundation, which is combined as a component unit of the district as a separate fund. We backed out some of the extraordinary items related to the new top market tax credits and the, the Qualic Bee information or the notes receivable from the Qualic Bees and some of that stuff. So excluding some of that stuff, just so you can get a better snapshot, the foundation accumulates and it provides resources to the district. And as of the, for fiscal year 25, there's about 900,000 of revenues and expenses for the year that was used to support the library district, so. And then this is the Capital Projects Fund. It has, that top line is the fund balance, so you can see that it's been increasing. Capital projects, funds, it's not unusual for them to kind of vary a little bit. Sometimes resources are saved up for a big project, which was that, the dip in 2024 was some resources utilized for the, the library district, the West Las Vegas Library District. So by then, you can see it's bounced back up in, in 2005. There's 62 million in fund balance there. The main revenue source of this fund is transfers from the general fund. So there's the 16, there's the 16.5 million revenues that came in from transfers. And the expenditures for the year were 4.4 million. So, yeah, as you can see, yeah, there's, there's resources available to be used, so. So that's the, the, what I had to present. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take questions. And if you think of anything later that you want to reach out to us, there's our contact information. McKay Hall is one of the partners here and he is also involved with the audit. And so his information is there as well if you're interested, so.
Okay, I'll open up to my fellow trustees and see if you had any follow-up questions to the thorough presentation. Okay, go ahead, trustee Sanchez.
Okay, thank you. So regarding the audit, thank you for being so thorough. That was really great. I know that Floresto was saying that there's a belief that so far, so good, we're going to be okay for next year. And I, I guess my question is, are we maintaining the same amount in reserves that we did last year? I believe the answer is yes, but I just want to double check.
Yes, that's correct, trustee Sanchez. We budget conservatively, so we actually expect to have a larger reserve at the end of the fiscal year. For example, the fund balance that Ms. Singleton referred to is higher than the budget and that's due to savings that the district maintains throughout the year. And those additional savings are budgeted for also and result in being transferred over to the Capital Projects Funds for capital, capital initiatives.
Okay, so you're saving it for the capital initiative, but at the end of the fiscal year, you'll still, you still believe you'll have more in reserves?
Yes, Ms. Singleton referred to the rule of thumb and we do maintain a balance that's even higher than that because of the economic uncertainty we're currently in.
Okay, that's, 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 that's just what I wanted to confirm. Okay, thank you. That is a, that's great. That's wonderful. Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to say on behalf of the board, we appreciate, you know, just the fiscal responsibility and stewardship and just always providing very thorough updates. I know many of us are on the Finance Audit Committee and some of the members actually call in. And we're always impressed with the presentations and it's always comforting to know that as trustee Sanchez asked a question about, you know, knowing that we are in a very, very strong financial position and then also knowing that, you know, we're able to pass audits cleanly. So not only do we conduct a lot of business and we're financially sound, but we're also doing things in a compliant, responsible way. So we appreciate and thank all those involved with making sure that we are, we are having the outcome that we're having. Many organizations are not in a strong financial position that we're in today, given all the uncertainty. So we, we appreciate being board members and not having to concern ourselves with, with those challenges. So, so thank everyone involved and also Executive Director Washington for his leadership there as well. All right, thank you, Floresto. So I will see if my board members are in favor of approving the consent item in its entirety. And if so, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we will call for the question. All those in favor of approving the consent item, the consent agenda items in its entirety, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we will move to Agenda Item 8B, regular agenda item. And we have for presentation and discussion and possible board action to approve staff engagement training facilitated by the Beckley Group.
For the record, Jeffrey Serpico, Human Resources Director, Chair Rogers, Executive Director Watson, board. Do have a presentation here. The presentation is included in your board documents, and I apologize, I'm going to have to read mine off the thing because I can't read that far from this presentation. We're going to talk today about expanding on our leadership and organizational development initiatives at the district. Today, I'm going to talk about review work and review the work we've done on organizational development initiatives to date. And then outline the next steps, which relate to this request for organizational development initiative facilitation to be done with the Beckley Group, which I just want to add has been budgeted for in this budget year. Really quick, who is the Beckley Group? The Beckley Group is a leadership development, organizational development consulting firm focused on helping teams and leaders build engagement, communication, and high performance. They are a local Las Vegas firm, and we have partnered with, they have partnered with the Library District to assess employee engagement and strengthen leadership and team capabilities across the organization. So where have we been so far in 2023? These initiatives are much smaller in scale. We did senior leadership training with the Beckley Group for the A-Team, which is the administrative group of directors. That year, we also did some senior leadership coaching. They did some individual coaching sessions with the leaders. Again, this is has Executive Director Watson was building the team and working with the team members to learn our nuances of communication and how we, we achieve our goals. In 2024, we did the Gallup Assessment and Survey. In 2025, we did lead leadership training where we did a training program for our supervisors and managers. And we'll cover, cover a little bit about each one of those programs in the next slides. For 2026, we are looking at a large component of this initiative, which would be training the team, which would be all of the full-time staff members. So it's probably close to about 300 people. When we did the senior leadership training and some coaching in 2023, some highlights were the senior leaders completed a high-performance leadership training program. Each leader developed a personalized leadership plan focused on growth and accountability. The team clarified its purpose, goals, and alignment with district leadership. This is very important. You had a new leadership team. Half of the team was brand-new. A new executive director gave us an opportunity to work through some of the issues that come up in terms of communication. We created an accountability dashboard and improved meeting structure, conducted one-on-one and small group coaching for all senior leadership team members. And we enhanced departmental collaboration and communication through targeted coaching. Again, they worked individually with some of the team members to enhance communication. In 2024, we did the Gallup Engagement Survey to get a benchmark on our employee engagement. As many of us know, in large organizations, when you're working on employee engagement, various firms do these types of surveys. It gives you a base, baseline metrics to work from and target improvement areas. We use Gallup. Some places use Press Ganey and other industries. But in 2024, we launched the Library District Employees Engagement Survey through Gallup. We did receive 462 responses, a 62% rate, which is pretty good, pretty good in a large organization. Our strengths, and these were presented at the Town Hall, for many of you who have been on the board may remember, our strengths were clarity of expectations, supportive management, strong resources. Areas for growth were identified as recognition, communication, and team collaboration. Those results were presented at the 2024 Town Hall. In response, also, we worked to develop lead training and coaching programs focused on the five behaviors of team program, developed the strength and leadership communication and employee engagement across the district. This was rolled out to just our supervisors and managers at the district. And it also lined up with what we went through as the administrative team. So we're all trying to speak the same language in terms of how we get things done. Okay, LEAD Training, which stands for Learn, Engage, Accelerate, and Develop, we completed it this year in 2025. That was facilitated for managers and supervisors, and it focused on four leadership modules, which were strengthening core leadership skills, managing and adapting to different personality styles, building team trust and collaboration, which is a big, big thing when you're trying to achieve these large goals that we work on, and empower, empowering team members to perform effectively. Now we're looking to move into the rather large part of this initiative, which is the next phase, which is planned for next year, 2026. And that would be the staff training, the team. It's a companion to the LEAD Program. We're going to, looking to train full-time employees with one-plus years of service, which is actually a little over 200 folks. There would be three-session programs with 30 participants each. Each participant also completes a DISC assessment, which if you've ever used is a very valuable tool. Many folks, you know, take it, and then they look at their score, and it's kind of a novelty thing. But you can really take DISC to the next level by using it to build teams, effective project teams. And it really is useful to have those DISC profiles on your staff because it helps communicate with the different styles. Being a strong D, it's always helped me to communicate with my team members when you've got a different DISC, DISC, DISC style, excuse me. It'll also be interactive workshops, learning, application discuss, discussions, exercises, and back-at-work plans. And the five behaviors of a cohesive team, which is, this is built around the results, accountability, commitment, conflict, and trust, trust being the base. There we are. I covered the last slide before that, so. Okay, so the recommended motion would be to approve staff engagement training facilitated by the Beckley Group. We do have Brittany Price from the Beckley Group here this evening, who we've worked with regarding some of the other classes we've done. If we have any questions about the curriculum or the instruction we're proposing, the cost to educate, put the rest of the team through that training is $72,500. And we did include this in the, the budget for this year.
All right, I know Trustee Lukowski has a follow-up question, so I'll start with her.
Hi, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I, could you briefly talk about the evaluation process at the end of this? How, how the effectiveness, to gauge the effectiveness?
Gauging effectiveness will usually be done via the next engagement survey. You're looking for, did you move the needle on some of those scores? And that usually takes a little bit of time. A lot of the things you're teaching to enhance the effectiveness of the organization are these behavioral skills. How do we communicate with each other? How do we deal with each other when there's conflict? Do we sweep it under the rug, or do we bring it out and resolve it? Those things can typically take, you know, it's, it's definitely more than a year for, for them to start to really bloom in the culture. But the way the metric would be in those areas where we were looking to increase our strengths, did we increase those strengths on the next engagement survey? Which is done by a third party, which is usually the best, the best thing, yeah.
That sounds good.
Let's keep it neutral.
Yeah, because if you don't know what kind of, you know, goal you're trying to make, oftentimes it's, you know, employee turnover or, you know, satisfaction of employees.
Yeah.
So if you've really done your job good and, and so far, I guess my other question would be, has it been receptive, have the employees been fairly receptive of, of this process?
They were receptive. The leadership team who's, who was, went through it was overall positive comments. Beckley did do a touch base with them. Brittany, did you want to maybe, this is Brittany Price. They did a touch base at the end of it and a survey of the people that went through there.
Hi there, Brittany Price with the Beckley Group, for the record. And we did do a survey after, actually, after we did the LEAD training with supervisors and managers. And we did have an overwhelmingly positive response. And I will say, you know, we do this work with many different types of organizations, and the level of engagement with the team throughout the library was really amazing. It was so great to be able to first start with engagement at the highest end of the organization and working with your leaders and really cascade that messaging down to the supervisors and the managers. And now to get to work, you know, with the staff and really continue to build that culture is something that we're really excited for the opportunity to do. I know personally, before we started working with the Library District, I knew very little about the work that you all did. I actually knew very little about the libraries in general. And my mind was blown when I really learned about all of the services and really the work that you all do for the community. And your team members put so much into the community that it's amazing to see that your leadership team and the leadership under, you know, Kelvin's direction sees the importance and the commitment in investing in these team members who do so much for our community. So very excited to get to continue to do that, hopefully in the future with the team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, and I just wanted to make a quick comment, not necessarily a question. But I'm glad to see this work being done. My first meeting, I can recall several 50-plus employees standing up, talking about diversity and inclusion and those type of things. But to see that we are still looking to train and assist our team is important. So to see that work continue from that first meeting tonight to today is, is good to see.
Any other questions, trustees? All right, we'll call for the question. Do we have a motion to approve staff engagement training facilitated by the Beckley Group with the cost not to exceed $72,500? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All right, hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
We will move to Agenda Item 9, which is executive session, which is not necessary today, thankfully. We will move to announcements at Agenda Item 10. As a reminder, we have our December board meeting that will be held at our Whitney Library location. And then in January, we will be at Summerlin, and February, we will be at Windmill. Chandler, do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
There is no public comment.
No public comment. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I'm going to use the gap. Let me see, I didn't check to see who Thursday.